And is out of town tonight. She's with the UK Paducah Engineering Faculty Member, Dr. Jeffrey C. And Chemical Engineering Undergraduate Research Student Chadnee Joshy. I'm not sure exactly how to pronounce that, but they are over there as a potential research and collaboration opportunities for UK Engineering School in Gabon. So she will be gone for a couple of days, and an anonymous donor is providing the funds for her airfare. I'll go ahead and add that into before we get any questions about it. So she'll be gone for a couple of days. We'll begin with the invocation. Commissioner Abraham is going to lead us in, and then we'll be followed with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
My Father, we're trying to heaven. Father, we thank you for opportunities. We thank you for understanding your character to the point that we never give up. To give up would mean there's no hope, and there's eternal hope in you. So Father, help us to focus in on what's important, and what's important is that we try to live up to your character. These things we ask in your shoes, none.
Want to join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll just add that we pray for a safe trip for Mayor Kayler.
Yes.
And also for a very successful trip. Commissioner Abraham, you have the minutes?
I do. I move that the reading of the minutes for April 22nd, 2014, and May 6th, 2014, to the commission meetings be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. Roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye.
We'll move on to appointments now for the Board of Civil Service Engineers. Commissioners? Whereas upon the recommendation of Mayor Kayler, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Martin Bendick as a member of the Board of Civil Service Commission to replace Raleigh France, who has resigned. This term shall expire May 13th, 2014.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Kayler in appointing Martin Bendick as a member of the Board of Civil Service Commission.
Second.
It should be May 13th, 2017. Roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye.
We'll move on to motions, and Commissioner Rhodes.
Okay. Well, the R and F documents, and I don't believe I've got that. Oh, okay, thank you. I move that the following documents be received and filed documents. Number one, certificates of liability insurance, Lee and Associates, BH Green and Sons Incorporated, Dave's Electrical LLC, special warranty deed for 510-514-Broadway Columbia Theater Building, ordinance number 2014-04-8129, Commissioner's deed for 2306 Yula Street, agreements and contracts, memorandum of understanding with Higdon Development Incorporated for property development located at 451 Leach Road, ordinance 2014-04-8134, contract for services with Brook Stadium Commission executed by the city manager, Paducah Power System rates and rules and regulations, Paducah Water Works financial highlights for March 2014, PRDA 2014 Riverfront Development Report, and finally, City of Paducah Department of Finance report for period ending March 31st, 2014.
Second. Hey, thank you. Roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. We'll move on to municipal orders, of which we will vote on. Commissioner Abraham?
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second. Cindy?
Good evening.
Long list.
It is a long list. We have a lot of movement, as we always do this time of year in the Parks Department, but one of the items I would like to briefly highlight for you is a promotion that we're pleased to present for your approval in the Police Department. Detective Anthony Copeland moving from detective to sergeant, and pending your approval, we've got a penning ceremony planned.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Cindy. Roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order approving the advertisement for bid and distribution of a preliminary official statement for the purchase of City of Paducah General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2014A in the aggregate principal amount of approximately $5,765,000 be adopted.
Second.
Jonathan?
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tim, and Commissioners. This municipal order along with ordinance you'll be reading later on tonight, but I'll go ahead and address all this so you can address myself. Or Mark Rollings with Hilliards, he's our financial advisor. The history on this bond is this. In 2010, the City of Paducah issued $6.6 million in taxable Build America Bonds, or commonly referred to as BABS. The bonds were used to pay for several capital projects, including street resurfacing, the pavilion acquisition, park improvements, just to name a few. When the issue was first placed, the federal government promised to provide 35% of all interest paid for the life of the bond issue, but more recently, with sequestration, and I'm sure you're familiar with that, the federal government broke its promise and has reduced the amount of interest expense they reimburse to us. We propose to refinance the 2010 taxable bonds with bond proceeds from an upcoming May 27th tax-exempt bond issue. By refinancing, we will remove the city's dependency on the federal government for interest subsidy payments, which may continue to decrease into the future, and hopefully achieve a more favorable tax-exempt rate through the year 2030. It's anticipated that the proposed financing, refinancing, will produce an estimated net interest savings of around $210,000 for the life of the bond. I or Mark with Hilliards would be glad to address any kind of questions that you may have about this bond refinancing.
Do you all have any questions? City Manager, do you have anything you want to add?
No, it's always a good thing when we can refinance and save taxpayers' interest costs.
Hey, roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Before we move on, I wanted to just mention that Sergeant Copeland is in the audience tonight, so we just want to congratulate you. I understand we'll have a penning ceremony next week, but congratulations. I didn't see you. You were here earlier, so congratulations. Okay, now we'll move on with Commissioner Rhodes.
Okay. I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order approving the execution of an online grant application to obtain a 2014-2015 Edward Byrne Memorial Grant to the US Department of Justice in the amount of $1,3117 to be used by the Paducah Police Department and be adopted.
Second. Chief Barnhill?
Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioners, thank you for this evening. We are here to present this grant to you all. It is, as mentioned, a $13,000 grant. We have earmarked a roughly $1,241 out of our FY '15 budget to be able to accomplish and fulfill five full radios out of that. That was the money left over, or the amount left over. So we are kind of thinking forward. We know that five radios will not complete our project, but it gets us closer. That'll put us within about four radios of having everything compliant with what is called P-25, which is the next stage in radios and next stage in law enforcement dispatching and those type things. It makes it compliant with receiving texts and emails and everything. So we're kind of thinking towards the future, and these radios will be compliant with that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the application for a matching grant in the amount of $200,000 through the Delta Regional Authority Investment Program, known as the state's Economic Development Assistant Program, to help provide funding to support small business entrepreneurs who are looking to locate or are located in the downtown historical district.
Second.
Good evening. If awarded, these funds would be tied to the rehab of structures within the downtown historic district. They would create new businesses and jobs in the downtown area. If we were awarded, we'd also have to set up a program that would set out the parameters of how these grants would be awarded to these new businesses. The Delta Regional Authority is approximately, I think it's 254 counties within the Delta region. I think it encompass eight states.
How long do you think it would be before you know anything?
Not sure, Commissioner. Typically, three to four months on something like this.
Steve, is this a grant source that had been on the radar screen before with the city?
No, this is new to us. It's the first time we've applied for it.
Okay. Without asking more questions about how we found it or anything like that, I just want to point out how pleased I am that the staff of the planning department, through their industriousness and so on and so forth, went out and found this grant opportunity that just is hand in glove with the direction we want to go in that department, which is creating new programs for downtown building redevelopment that can incite and inspire that on the part of individuals, and for that opportunity to be discovered at this point in time is particularly significant as we endeavor to put together a budget and find monies for those programs as well, which this would either supplement or maybe provide some of the resources that we might not otherwise be able to find. So it's just, we really commend you all for that and keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you, and obviously Cheryl, the grants administrator is doing a great job.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a deed of conveyance in all documents relating to saying for acquisition of permanent right-of-way and a public utility easement located at 3400 Olivet Church Road for the Olivet Church Road Improvement Project, for and in consideration of $3,400 be adopted.
Second.
Hello, Rick.
Hello, Mayor Pro Tim, balance of the commission. This is one right-of-way acquisition and easement on the Olivet Church Road project. We have six remaining. These are minor, and when I say minor, total aggregate cost of those that are remaining, order magnitude 15,000 to $18,000 in aggregate. That's all of them combined. We do, well, later on the agenda, we have some information regarding utility relocations. That's getting underway as we speak, so we're moving.
I have to ask a question, just for fun. I do notice that the property is located at 3400 Olivet Church Road, and the consideration is $3,400. How strange is that?
We noted that as well.
I think that's just great. That's got to be a good omen.
And it's really interesting that the adjacent property, that address was real close to, as far as what we paid for that was similar as well.
I'm glad we didn't get into the 800 block or the 8,000 block.
Or those that have a bunch of sixes, an omen.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. Roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. All right, we'll move into ordinances. Commissioner Rhodes?
All right. Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety for the Heads Up, Don't Be Intesticated Mini-Grant Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the Kentucky Office of Highway Safety in the amount of $21,000 for the presentation of the Heads Up, Don't Be Intesticated Program presented by the Paducah Police Department. No local cash match is required.
Second. Any other discussion on that? We've already reviewed it once. Okay, roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Next ordinance, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 126 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby amend Section 126-76, sign regulation of Chapter 126 zoning of Paducah Code of Ordinances, change approval of event banners over Broadway, Broadway pole banners, Jefferson Street pole banners, and Lower Town pole banners from the Engineering Public Works Department to the Park Services Department.
Second. Roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance extending the boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky by intent to annex certain property lying adjacent to the corporate limits of the City of Paducah, and defining accurately the boundary of said property to be included within the said corporate limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Approving intent to annex a tract of property contiguous to the present city limits located at 3025 Olivet Church Road containing 4.946 acres more or less.
Second.
We've already heard this one before. Any other discussion? Hey, roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 42, Environment of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The ordinance abolishes Section 42-46C, enhanced standards for Fountain Avenue revitalization project of Chapter 42, Environment of the Paducah Code of Ordinances.
Second. Roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Move back to you, Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance abolishing the current Main Street Department ordinance and creating an advisory board to be known as the Paducah Main Street Board of Directors, providing for the appointment and terms of members, and establishing the role and purpose of said board. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby abolishes Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 6 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances entitled, Main Street Department, abolishes Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 15, entitled, Paducah Renaissance Alliance Advisory Board, and creates a new section in the Code of Ordinances in Chapter 2, Article 6, to establish the Paducah Main Street Board of Directors.
Second. Hey, anything else? Roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2002-10-6589, entitled, an ordinance approving the concept of growth through annexation agreements. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city hereby amends ordinance number 2002-10-6589 to set the amount being reimbursed to the developer to not exceed the total cost of the municipal services or the total sum of all ad valorem real property taxes collected by the City of Paducah from the developed property, whichever is less over a 10-year period.
Second.
Roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2005-1-6921, entitled, approving the concept of expedited growth through development agreements which promote residential infill development. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah amends ordinance number 2005-1-6921 to establish a time of 10 years that the city will reimburse the developer for the actual costs incurred in the connection with the construction of qualified municipal facilities, streets, gutters, and other public infrastructure with the property to be developed.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving a revolving line of credit from Ventura Bank in the principal amount not to exceed $350,000, authorizing the mayor to execute the revolving line of credit agreement and other loan documents relating thereto, and authorizing a designated agent to draw funds from the revolving line of credit, all of which is necessary to finance a portion of the city's proposed construction costs in the Fountain Avenue and Lower Town Neighborhood Revitalization Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. By this ordinance, the City of Paducah, Kentucky authorizes and approves a revolving line of credit from Ventura Bank in the principal amount not to exceed $350,000 for a term of six months with interest thereon at a fixed rate of 2.95 per annum, subject to commercially reasonable terms and conditions. The funds drawn from the revolving line of credit shall be utilized to finance a portion of the city's construction costs incurred in the furtherance of its commitments to complete construction of two new structures located at 1403 Monroe Street and 717 Harrison within the Fountain Avenue and Lower Town Neighborhood. Further, the city authorizes and directs the Finance Director of the City of Paducah, Kentucky to request and draws upon, efficient to draw upon the revolving line of credit as deemed necessary by the City Planning Department to satisfy construction costs incurred by the city in the furtherance of its commitment.
Second. Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Okay, now we'll move into ordinance introduction, and we will not vote on these. The first one is with Commissioner Galt.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky authorizing the issuance of General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2014A in the aggregate principal amount of $5,765,000, subject to a permitted adjustment increasing or decreasing the size of said bonds by up to $575,000, to currently refund the outstanding City of Paducah, Kentucky taxable general obligation Build America Bonds Series 2010, Build America Bonds Direct Payment, the proceeds of which were used to finance the costs of various public projects within the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating a bond payment fund, maintaining the heretofore created sinking fund, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchaser or purchasers for the purchase of the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds designated as Series 2014A in the approximate principal amount of $5,765,000, the bonds, by the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the city. The bonds are to be issued for the purpose of currently refunding the outstanding City of Paducah, Kentucky taxable general obligation Build America Bonds Series 2010, Build America Bonds Direct Payment, the prior bonds, the proceeds of which were used to finance various public projects within the city, including the construction of the Greenway Trail, the construction of a replacement for the existing Noble Park parking lot, and construction of related opportunances, the resurfacing of city streets, the acquisition and installation of generators throughout the city, the acquisition and installation of traffic signals, the acquisition of the Executive End and related opportunances, and the construction and installation of public improvements on a portion of the site thereof, the acquisition and construction of an air dome pavilion, the acquisition of real property for use as a sports park, and the acquisition of such additional improvements and substitution of any of the foregoing as were identified in the budget of the city adopted for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2010. Collectively, the project provisions are made in the ordinance for the payment of the bonds and the security therefore, for the applications of the proceeds of the bonds, for the establishment of bond payment funds, for the maintenance of the previously established sinking fund, and for certain covenants of the city with respect to the bonds. The bonds are to be sold at public competitive sale and shall mature or be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption in varying amounts on March 1st of each of the years 2015 through 2030. The bonds pledge the full faith and credit of the city and provision is made for the collection of a tax to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds, subject to certain credits, as provided in Section 8 of the ordinance. As required by KRS 83A.060, the following Section 7 of the ordinance is set forth in its entirety. Section 7, General Obligation. The bonds shall be full general obligations of the city and for the payment of said bonds and the interest thereon. The full faith, credit, and revenue of the city are hereby pledged for the prompt payment thereof. During the period of bonds are outstanding, there shall be and hereby is levied on all the taxable property in the city, in addition to all other taxes, without limitation as to rate a direct tax annually in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds when and as due, it being hereby found and determined that current tax rates are within all applicable limitations. Said tax shall be and is hereby ordered, computed, certified, levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate and collected by the same officers in the same manner and at the same time that taxes for general purposes for each of said years are certified, extended, and collected. Said tax shall be placed before and in preference to all other items and for the full amount thereof provided. However, that in each year, to the extent that the other lawfully available funds of the city are available for the payment of the bonds, including amounts available under the lease and are appropriated for such purposes, the amount of such direct tax upon all of the taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of such other funds so available and appropriated.
Second.
Thank you. That was a very long one. Jonathan, or do you have anything you want to add to this? Always draw the short straw. Okay. Any other question? Questions, discussion? Okay, we'll move on then. Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement with the Electric Plant Board of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, DBA Paducah Power System for the electrical construction related to Olivet Church Road roadway improvement project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement between the Electric Plant Board of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, DBA Paducah Power System, and the City of Paducah for reimbursement for the actual labor and materials necessary for the electrical construction to complete the Olivet Church Road roadway improvement project, estimated $225,000. In the event that the total invoice amount exceeds the estimate amount required to complete said project, the city hereby authorizes the Finance Director to issue payment for the actual total cost to Paducah Power System.
Second. Thank you. Rick?
Mayor Pro Tim and Commission, this is one of the, I guess, ordinance introductions I was speaking of earlier. Actually, Paducah Power, the trees have already been trimmed. Paducah Power already has its pole locations marked with the red stakes out in the yards, and we've already made contact with a majority of all the property owners out there to make them aware of this activity, so they're prepared.
Great, thank you.
For the power portion.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement with Paducah McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency for sanitary sewer construction related to the Olivet Church Road Improvement Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement between Paducah McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency and the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for reimbursement of sanitary sewer construction work related to the Olivet Church Road roadway improvement. work related to the Olivet Church Road roadway improvement project estimated at three hundred and four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. In the event the total invoice amount exceeds the estimated amount required to complete said project, the city hereby authorizes the Finance Director to issue payment for the actual total costs incurred by Paducah McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency.
Second. Rick?
Similarly, as the Paducah Power Agreement, the Joint Sewer Agency is, has bid this project, outsourced it, and that relocation will be underway very shortly. Paducah Power and JSA will not be working in the same area at the same time, but they will both be active in the area.
Any other questions?
There, are there any big, it says about the Transportation Cabinet will reimburse. Are there any particular hoops to jump through to get that, in other words, it's?
Actually, Commissioner Rhodes, those, I guess, hoops were jumped through in 2006 when we were granted a two million dollar right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation contract with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and it's those funds that we are currently operating on.
So, they're expecting it? So, okay, great.
Essentially, we spend the money up for, upfront. We tally, we tally that, we put together a package, we send it to Frankfort, and we receive a check back for our efforts.
I like that.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Commissioner Galt.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to pay AES Environmental LLC for the disposal of household hazardous waste collected during the City-County Free Cleanup Day. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the Finance Director is hereby authorized to pay AES Environmental LLC in the amount of twenty-three thousand, sixty-five dollars and forty cents for the disposal of household hazardous waste collected during the City-County Cle, City-County Free Cleanup Day.
Second.
Is it pretty much self-explanatory? This pays the bill for the cleanup day. Last year, we collected about twenty-one thousand dollars. That, the grant we received covers twenty-seven thousand, so we're doing a pretty good job of making the best use of that money.
All right, thank you. You gonna stay up for another one? Commissioner Rhodes?
Hey, my last one. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for the closure of a portion of Ridgewood Street between Topeka Avenue and Olympia Avenue, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby authorizes the closing of a portion of Ridgewood Street between Topeka Avenue and Olympia Avenue, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transfer of property to the property owners in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim and Commission, this is in concert, or I guess, cooperation with an adjacent property owner, developer, who wishes to develop in the Bleach Road and I would say more behind the big Kmart out towards Lone Oak Football Field. This is an undeveloped piece of right-of-way. It's, it's actually part of a remnant piece of right-of-way that was there when the City of Paducah annexed property in 1976 that we would never build a road on, and it can be actually better served and better used being contiguous to this property that's being developed.
Any questions? Thank you, Rick. Now you can go. Thank you. City Manager, do you have any?
Oh, I'll come with a couple of things. This weekend is the annual Lower Town Arts Festival, Friday night and all day, and evening Saturday. The city is a major sponsor of this event. We contribute fifteen thousand dollars in cash and approximately forty thousand dollars in in-kind service and various levels of participation by several city departments, so it's truly a community event. Encourage everybody to come out and take advantage of the entertainment, the food, and all that goes with that. Next Tuesday night is a workshop night. As far as I can tell right now, we have just a single item, and that will be a presentation by BFW and Markham Engineering on a conditional analysis of City Hall. This is something that came about following a presentation that Rick and I made about a year ago that was very preliminary with respect to deficiencies with the building and, and some, again, very preliminary cost projections. This is a much more thorough analysis with cost projections that are much more accurate, that quite frankly reflect the fact that this is a fifty-year-old building that has had very little reinvestment in it, and that is showing. So ultimately, I think the perspective on that is, is what the requirements would be for reinvestment in the building for another similar period of time. So I think you'll find this, find this information quite interesting, and we look forward to the presentation next Tuesday. That's all I have.
I think this weekend is also Maritime Day. Commissioner Galt, do you have?
It is. It is on Saturday morning at 10 o'clock. They will recognize the Port Person of the Year and the Maritime Person of the Year at Maiden Alley, so they would invite the public out to experience that.
Right. Well, to say, if you say there's nothing to do in Paducah, you just aren't looking, because there's plenty to do every weekend and just about every day.
That's right.
Yeah, I wanted to just comment. On this past weekend, we had the Iron Mom Race Half Marathon, and it was great. I don't know, I'm thinking nine hu, over, over nine hundred participants. You know, I think it, it keeps growing. And then later on that evening was the Miners-Arters baseball game out at the Brooks Stadium, which is like a field of dreams. I, I never played baseball, but I would give it a shot if I could play out there. I mean, it's, it's really nice. It's, it's easy, it's easy to go out and see the work that Doc and the rest of that staff, they do out there, and players love it, hands down. It's their best place to play, they'll tell you. So, it's got that whole nostalgic feel. So, you're right, it's plenty to do here.
Right. Well, I want to congratulate Cindy Med for the HR Director for the city on the, on the Iron Moms. She's very instrumental in organizing that. It was very well done. We saw a lot of new people in Paducah, so that was great. And Friday night was a celebration of 50th anniversary of the Human Rights Commission.
Yes.
Dr. Belt, so everybody, it was, it was a busy weekend. Just want to mention today, Lourdes celebrated the groundbreaking, groundbreaking celebration of the Ray and Kay Exton Hospice Care Center at Lourdes, that they've raised all the money for building that project and for an endowment with it as well. So it was a good day. That's going to be a nice addition to our community. Anyone else have anything? We sure have covered a lot of territory. We had two pages of ordinances, so thank you all for being here. Thank you. If nothing else, the meeting is adjourned.